Two. One.
I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless meeting for August the 24th, 2020. The invocation and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Swagger.
As we come together this evening, may we continue the work that we have all done for the better of our town and the residents through careful thought and discussion. Amen. Please join the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to your flag.
All right. Thank you very much. Announcements? The Fitness Court is going to be having its opening ceremony this September 12th at 11 o'clock. We want to let everyone know about that. We will be still doing all of our social distancing there. So if you plan to attend, please keep that in mind. The 2020 census response has passed the 2014 rate of 82.3%. Nice job. We are in the top 100 communities in PA for our response rate. So keep those census coming, please. Also, the town, everyone, please look out for the town's going to be posting its authorities and committees and board positions for vacancies in the 2020. We have all, we've done the EAC. We're working on the library right now, but the rest of those postings are going to be coming up soon. So please keep an eye on that. If anyone is interested, or if you have any neighbors or friends that live in McCandless that might also be interested, it's really a great way to get involved with your community and to give back. Next will be public comment on any issue, and then there will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the public hearing about the antenna system, the distribution antenna system. So right now, if there's anyone that has some general comment?
Yep. So we've got one person so far signed up. Just as a friendly reminder for everyone, you can use the chat box, name, address, and whether you're just doing general public comment, or if you are intending to comment on the public hearing subject when we get to that point. So, you know, if there's anyone else still waiting to sign up while this first person gives their comment, feel free to type it in the chat box. Otherwise, once we move on from that, closed for general. We've got John, might say it wrong, sorry in advance, Koenig, possibly, 1001 Apple Hill Lane. This is for general public comment. John, I am going to send you a camera and microphone request now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
My name is John Koenig. I am a McCandless resident for the past three years, and I just wanted to bring up my concerns as a concerned resident, given everything that's been going on this year, and hearing some different things about emergency services within the town, and hearing some different things from people, and wanted to know the involvement with the Town of McCandless and the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority, and what assistance they may offer in future contributions to that organization. Given COVID-19 and everything, how those first responders put their lives on the line day in and day out, just some general knowledge, and I mean, maybe this can be an ongoing discussion. I know there's been some multiple municipal meetings regarding the authority, and just wanted to see how much the town truly values the work that that authority does, and wanted to see what contributions the town might be interested in making for sustainability in the future. I know the town provides excellent police protection and fire protection, but looking at the town's budget, why EMS would only get about 1% of the funding the police department gets, and about less than 10% of the money that is allocated for fire protection. And I think if you did a survey of the public in the town, the majority of them might think EMS is tax-funded, like most of my neighbors think, and I think, you know, there's a very big misconception within the town and among the EMS community in general. And I think the town really needs to step up and consider contributing to their, to their future operations, whether that's in collaboration with other townships through, you know, a multi-jurisdictional agreement, or, you know, some other, some other, you know, funding base and things like that. And just one closing comment, you know, you never hear anybody say defund EMS or defund the local ambulance service, because nobody really thinks about the ambulance service until you need them. And believe me, when you need them, you need them. So I will just close with that, and I appreciate this open forum this evening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. I'll take part of that, and that is, this is a comment time, so we don't really go into answering a lot of questions at this time. It's mainly an opportunity to hear your, your concerns and your, your ideas, but I will tell you that currently, all the stakeholders that are served by the Franklin, by the McCandless Franklin Park EMS service are currently working together, trying to work through some of those very issues that you mentioned tonight. It is an incredibly valuable service to our town and some other towns, and we certainly know that, and it, it is something that we are currently working through. I'm sure there'll be discussions, watch for the agenda topics, but it's, it's coming. It's coming. So, thank you for your comments. We agree with you. It is a very valued service. Thank you. Is there another, anyone else, any other public comment?
I haven't had anyone else sign up.
Okay. All right then. Let's move on and open our public hearing on the ordinance to amend the distributed antenna system and the stealth technology. A vote on this ordinance is scheduled at the town meeting, council's meeting, September 14th, 2020. Bob, do you want to start with the presentation on this, or how, who wants to start the presentation?
I, I'll be happy, I'll be happy to give a little bit of background on this. The discussion regarding this amendment to the ordinance began as a result of regulation updates from the FCC. We wanted to bring our, our ordinance into compliance with the FCC rules and regulations. There has been some additional discussion regarding these distributed antenna systems, which will become over time more and more prominent, to include some aspects of location and aesthetics. I think RJ and Gavin can speak to that, that evolution from a basic update of some of the rules and regulations into, to what we have in front of us right now. Gavin?
Yeah, sure. I guess I can supplement a little bit, then I'll turn it over to RJ. But as you pointed out, Bob, it did start with the FCC regulations, and then we really wanted to focus on mitigating the impact that, especially if these proliferate throughout the town. We wanted to make sure, you know, for instance, that they were, to the extent possible, concentrated on more commercial-type districts. We wanted to add, you know, sort of features like stealth technology to allow these sorts of small cell wireless, or DAS, as you call them, distributed antenna systems, to sort of blend in and not, and not really be eyesores and cause problems in the community. So, we also beefed up the application process, made it very clear what needs to be submitted by these telecommunications providers whenever they are filing an application. So, you know, we really wanted to, I guess finally, there's design guidelines, and maybe I'll let RJ touch on that, because I know she, she did quite a bit of work, and I think the municipal town engineer also provided some, some pictures, photographs, and illustrations, just to help sort of everyone understand what, what these might look like when they come. And, and I guess one other thing I wanted to note is, you know, the town has existing wireless communications facilities, regulations on the books. What this does is supplement those regulations. It doesn't replace them, except for a definition or two. So, this really is to bring us into compliance and to mitigate the impacts of this new type of technology.
Yeah. So, I mean, you, you did a pretty good summary in general of sort of where we've been, how we got here. Just a couple of things to add are, I believe you all got a redistribution of the PowerPoint that we had the last time that the group saw the ordinance draft, where those are, to be clear, just some examples of ways that the 5G technology could appear in sort of that stealth technology, whether it's on an existing telephone pole, where there's already utilities, or how you can kind of disguise them to be a streetlight in a more residential neighborhood. That was something that our engineers at Gateway worked with me, with Chris Foltz over at Tucker, to just put together some examples, so people would get an idea of, you know, these aren't like giant cell towers that are getting dropped into their sidewalk in a residential neighborhood, and some of the benefits that, you know, you have to have objective criteria for what the, the cell tower installer, excuse me, the 5G facility installers are able to follow. You know, they can't be so restrictive that it doesn't function the way that it's intended, but there are ways to sort of make them a little more comfortable, not, you know, an eyesore in the existing environment. So, there, there are some illustrations there. They've also been included in an appendix, similar, you know, formats for the different types of 5G tech that we could use, in whether it's a residential, commercial, you know, existing utility neighborhood. I also don't, do want to call out that some of the language in there required co-location, which means that essentially wherever it's feasible technologically hearing-wise, that, that a 5G installer should attempt to put their, you know, I, I, I don't know what to call, their, their receivers or their 5G boxes on the same facility. So that way, it's not like you get a Verizon pole, and an AT&amp;T pole, and a Sprint pole, all clustered together at the same spot. They're supposed to, you know, make every technological endeavor to put them on the same structure. So I think that's a big plus with the draft that we've got. Anything else, Gavin?
I guess the only other thing is, I think the draft provides for you and the town administration generally to establish, you know, as, as the, as this evolves, you can put some new standards in there. So for instance, if you, if you see something that seems to work really well, that's something you can adapt, and as long as it's sort of published ahead of time, that's something you could require the installers or the, the facilities providers to comply with.
Right. And, and we do through, you know, we're, we're with Gateway. They were able to connect us with some folks over at Crown Castle, which is one of the really prolific installers in the area, just to kind of get an idea of what is industry standards, what are ways that we can find more attractive, you know, installations of these that wouldn't necessarily be like we were making a custom pole that could cause a barrier or legislative issue, but that still, again, we were getting more aesthetically attractive options within what we're legally allowed to do through the FCC.
Right.
So, that's the summary of this ordinance. Everyone has had this to read over. Does council have any questions or comments about this? Shelley?
I just wanted to say that I've now read it twice, and I, I think this might be the newer version, and I think it's well done. I think it covers all of the potential issues, and I just wanted to say I think it's well done, plus the fact that it provides the opportunity for, for additions if new issues arise in the future. So, I'm, I'm in favor.
I'd, I'd like to take that nice compliment and also put with that a thank you to the Planning Commission, which also worked hard on this ordinance. Any other council member comments or questions about this? I think it's a good one. Okay. Okay. Are there any citizens, RJ, that are?
I did not have anyone sign up. Last call, if you're looking for a public hearing, specific comment here, but I have not seen anything else in the chat box.
Okay. All right. Hearing none, then we will close the public hearing. Ms. Cavalier, was that the shortest public hearing ever in the history of the world?
Very close to it.
No, thank you. We appreciate you coming in. It's always a pleasure to see you, dear.
Thank you, honey. Bye-bye. Have a great.
All right. All right. Moving on, is there a motion to approve the reconvene minutes, number seven?
Madam President?
Okay. All right. Trish, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, David. All right. All right. Are there, let me write this down. All right. Are there any, there really weren't any changes for this, and you all got a message that we normally approve our regular meeting minutes as well as this, but the regular meeting minutes needed a few touch-ups before we approved those. So they're not there. So there's really not much on this. Is there anything, anyone has to, really, these were just our interviews. Okay. All right. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The meeting, the minutes are adopted as submitted. Lee's on reports. Activities Committee?
Madam President, the, the Activities Committee report is in your packet. I apologize for the delay. I didn't, I was out of town. I didn't see it wasn't originally in there. So I hope everybody had an opportunity to read it. If you have any questions, please let me know, and our Activities Committee is looking forward to our virtual bingo this Thursday, and hopefully, you know, while we're dealing with pandemic, we can still bring our community together for these types of activities in the future.
Nicely done. I know a couple of our citizens mentioned community engagement and volunteerism, and I'm delighted that the Activities Committee is putting together a list of volunteers in the, in the community, people who want to be on the list. So when there's things that come up, we can give them a call and say, hey, we got this going on. So, thank you, Trish, for doing that. I think that's going to be extremely helpful.
Thank you.
EAC?
Thank you, Madam President. We, the, the minutes of the last EAC meeting are in the council packet. The only thing I wanted to point out, especially for planning and putting on your calendars, is that we're tentatively scheduling October 17th for the Fall Cleanup Day. Obviously, we'll have some different protocols to work with, logistics planning to include COVID safety, but we're very much looking forward to getting back out there on the streets and cleaning them up. So, if that changes, I'll let everyone know. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
All right. Let's move on to the Finance Development and Promotional Committee for the Heritage Center.
Yes, the report is in your packets, and you'll see there's a sub-bullet number one there for some items that technically don't have to be de-accessioned, because they're not actually part of the collection, but there's a list of items that the, they're going to see what they can do with. If there's any, any way to get monetary value for them, they will. Otherwise, they will figure out other ways to, you know, to, to handle the items on the list, which I believe the list was included in the packet.
It was. I'd like to recommend, also, I'm, I'm not a person who likes to throw away anything, is that items that can't be sold, or can, we have a, a nice Facebook site that Buy Nothing McCandless, and we can actually post those on there, and people can just get things free. It's, it's an, it's an excellent site. So just a suggestion for those last few items that can't find a home. Maybe they can find a home there.
That sounds excellent.
All right. There was no meeting for the Joint Rec Board, and junior council member starts his reports next month, so we'll need to swear him in. Note to self, next month, and then he'll start his reports then. Franklin Park Ambulance Authority?
Thank you, Madam President. As was noted by the, our public commentary tonight, we have continued to discuss the authority's financial challenges and their request for monetary support from all the communities that they serve. To that end, there was recently a multi-municipal meeting, and Mr. Grimm also scheduled a follow-up meeting with town managers and their financial staff, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Grimm for any comments he might have on the efforts we're undertaking to fully handle this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Fornholz. We, last week, group of managers from the municipalities within the authority's service area did convene, discussed the situation that the authority is facing. We have a number of different managers and their finance teams that are reviewing financial information from the authority to try to get a better idea of what the situation entails. We are going to be meeting next week with the Director of the Authority and the Finance Director of the Authority and the managers to further those conversations, ask some questions, and get some clarifications on questions that we, we still have. So, the, the discussion is moving forward, and I'll be able to report more next week to the council following that meeting.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Councilmember Fornholz? No. All right. I believe the MIDA did not meet this past month, and if any of that information is wrong, please speak out and let me know. The McCandless Senatorate Authority, Councilmember Smith?
Yes. The information should be in your packet, and just wanted to highlight that the MTSA did get a $500,000 grant from the state in connection with the new facility. One, it's, I think it's the boiler facility, part of the, the new facility. So I just wanted to highlight that they, they got a $500,000 grant for that, from the state.
Great. It's always, it's good news.
Good news.
Goodness. I believe there was no meeting for the North Hills Council Government?
That's correct.
Northland Library Authority, Councilmember Smith?
Yep, those minutes are in your packet, and just wanted to point out that the library is open, though they're taking a cautious approach. If there's a possible case of COVID, they're going to close the library down until the results come back. They, I think they did it earlier this week, or, I'm sorry, last week. But Amy Steele, the Executive Director, did want me to say that, that the library staff is excited to, to be open to the public again, and they're, they've been looking forward to it, and they're very happy to be, to be working with people again.
Thank you. Personnel Board, Councilmember Swagger?
Um, yes. So, pretty much, I mean, if you guys have any questions, let me know, but I wanted to note that since Sergeant Eatree had retired, his position is now open. But we're kind of slowly waiting to fill that as, dealing with budget issues and trying to like cut things. So I think that will probably be filled by February of 2021, and pretty much, I'm trying to see if there's anything else. And our next meeting is September 28th, 2020, so that's it.
I believe the North Pittsburgh Community Development Authority did not meet. Planning Commission, your, the minutes for that meeting are in your pack. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to take those. Technology Committee?
The minutes are included in your packets. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
That concludes my report. One, what's, just one quick question. At the end of the meeting, it said noted that PM has performed over and above any of our expectations. We just, what is PM? Will you please clarify that?
That's the IT consulting group that we're working with right now for the needs at Town Hall.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. I also wanted to say, I know you were looking at content. I know you're working on our cable channel. I'm so excited. I know you're looking for content with that. I spoke earlier this week with Amy Steele from the library, and she asked to be, please be included on that, that she has lots of great ideas for content for that channel, and would really like to be part of that.
I'll take note. This may be worth having a brainstorming session at some point to try and get, get some ideas. We have a lot of hours to fill.
Okay, all right. I, I know, I know she would be interested in being part of that group. So, thank you. Volunteer Firefighters Steering Committee did not have a meeting. Zoning Hearing Board?
We will be meeting this Wednesday coming.
Okay. All right. So we'll look, we'll look forward to hearing anything that, we need to hear from that. I did not have any particular reports or correspondence in the last week. Town Managers Report, do you need to add anything on that?
I just wanted to make you aware, you all have a copy of the report. I just wanted to add one brief item, an update on the multimodal grant-funded sidewalk projects that we're working on. The wetlands study has been completed for the Grubbs Road portion of the project, and there are no wetlands present in the proposed bridge crossing area, so that we will be able to proceed with either applying for a small project joint permit, or wait to see about the waiver program that DEP's been putting together. I'll have a chance to talk with the engineers more later in the week, and I can bring you up to speed with my update later in the week. But that's the only addition that I wanted to bring up.
Great. Thank you. Town Attorneys Report, any, anything you can tell us about?
Not really, Madam President. Of course, as always, I'm happy to try to answer any questions, but if they're confidential in nature, we can talk about them in a consecutive session after the meeting.
All right. Is there a motion for 12? Oh, sorry. Is there a motion for 12A under Old Business?
Move to approve checklist in number seven dated July 1st through July 31st, 2020, totaling $2,413,460.15, as submitted each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website.
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions? We received this in our last meeting. Are there any questions or comments about the checklist? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Checklist is approved. Thank you. Is there a motion for 12B?
Madam President?
Yes?
Move to adopt three, an ordinance amending and restating ordinance number 1486 and Part Nine Title One, Article 907 of the town's codified ordinances.
and Part Nine Title One, Article 907 of the Town's Codified Ordinances, regulating objects in the right of way, signs in the right of way, and to establish an enforcement procedure and penalties for violations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Shelley, all right, Councilmember Farnholz, okay. All right, we've been working on this a long time. Are there any, I think we've gotten it about where we want it. Are there any comments or questions that anyone has at this time about this?
Madam President, this is Dave Smith. Just wanted to express my appreciation to everyone on council and everyone else who worked on this ordinance. I think it came out really well. I think everybody had an open mind and listened to everybody else's concerns. And I would just like to express that I appreciate the process that it went through and think that the outcome is a good one.
Thank you for those comments. I think when seven, go ahead, Trish.
Again, I would also like to compliment everyone for working on this ordinance. And I appreciate the fact that we listened to our residents when some different guidelines on how far back was to be considered. And we came to the five foot, as noted in this. And I think that our residents spoke out and we listened to them. And I appreciate our council responding to them.
I agree with both of those comments. Are there any other comments? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion in the second. All those adopting our new objects in the right of way, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Terrific. 12C, is there a motion?
Madam President?
Trish Clunin.
Go ahead, David, I think you started first.
Okay, move to adopt Resolution Number 15 of the 2020 series, a resolution establishing a code of ethics policy, formalizing a set of principles and practices of those associated individuals serving the Town of McCandless.
Council, okay, Councilmember Clunin, you would like to second, all right. Are there any comments or questions on this ordinance? Again, I think it was a very good collaborative work. Seven heads are better than one. Well, I don't know how, what a better way to say that. Everybody had something to add. It was very good. Any other comments or questions about it? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So the next five motions, I just, are for the Environmental Advisory Committee. I just want to make sure that council take note that the first one is the filling of a current position, so it's two years, and that the last four are full terms. So I just wanted to call everyone's attention to that, so you would notice that detail. And we'll just take them one at a time, and we'll start with D. And if you just, well, it's hard, Trish can't raise her hand, but...
Are we, are we supposed, yeah, we have, are we supposed to raise our hand?
If you don't mind, Trish can't do it, so I'm going to try to keep an ear for her. She can't raise her hand, but it just, it makes it a little bit easier for taking notes and being fair with whoever went first. So if you raise your hand, it is a little bit easier for us to make sure the right person's name is down, if you don't mind. So is there a motion for the first appointment? Everybody's trying to figure out how to raise their hand. Shelley, Councilmember Farnholz? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to appoint Jeffrey Johnstone as a member of the Environmental Advisory Committee with a term to expire August 31st, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's been a motion and a second. Have any comments? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Appointment is confirmed. E?
Move to appoint Judy A. Bishop as a member of the Environmental Advisory Committee with a term to expire August 31st, 2024.
Second? Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Bishop is reappointed. F?
Trish Clunin, I move to appoint Jessica Smith-Avaro as a member of the Environmental Advisory Committee with a term to expire August 31st, 2024.
Second.
Okay, so that was Trish. Give me a hand for a second. Carolyn? Okay. All right, any comments or questions? We had such a great enthusiastic group, didn't we? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Appointment is confirmed. G? Miss, Councilmember Farnholz?
I raised my hand.
Yes, you did. You're so good. Councilmember Smith, he's going to get to make the second.
I move to appoint Ishmael Quakwa as a member of the Environmental Advisory Committee with a term to expire August 31st, 2024.
Is there a second?
I will second.
True.
Okay, all right. I think Councilmember Smith made that one. Are there any questions or comments on this candidate? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Appointment is confirmed. H, last one.
Go for it, Angela.
Yes, yeah, okay, go ahead. Councilmember Woods?
Madam President, I move to appoint Jonathan Bernstein as a member of the Environmental Advisory Committee with a term to expire August 31st, 2024.
Second.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Swagger? Questions or comments about this candidate? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Candidate is confirmed. All right, thank you very much. That's a big boost in EAC.
Thank you to everyone who applied.
Yeah.
A lot of great candidates.
Yeah, we had, we did, we, we really have very good candidates. All right, we are down to I. Okay, notification that a public hearing has been rescheduled to be held September 14th of 2020 on the ordinance amending Part 13, Title 13 of the zoning code to further regulate the keeping of household pets and adding associated definitions. A vote on this ordinance is scheduled at the meeting of Town Council on September 28th, 2020. All right. This second notification of a public hearing, which has been rescheduled, is to be held on September 28th, 2020, an ordinance establishing regulations pertaining to the keeping of chickens. A vote on this ordinance is scheduled at the meeting of Town Council on October 12th, 2020. Mr. Solicitor, these two, these two subjects were together and now they're split. Can you, do you mind just giving just a little short reason why that was, just for the public?
Sure, no problem. And I think we felt like they were different enough issues. Number one, I think for the sake of efficiency, you know, there may be some folks who, you know, feel strongly about one or the other. So it made sense, although, you know, there's nothing, no problem legally from keeping them together. It made sense after council's last discussion to split them apart. So we, we basically just kept the household pets, which includes the fostering and the keeping of animals at home on one ordinance. And then all the regulations related to the keeping of chickens have been separated into a separate ordinance. We got some really good input from Ms. Susko on the format of that chicken keeping ordinance. And we sort of, as council will see, or hope maybe has seen already, that draft, I think, works a lot better now because of the way it sets up accessory uses and accessory structures, being the chicken coops in the various districts in which they would, they would be permitted if council goes ahead and adopts that ordinance. So that's why, that's why they're split in the way they are, and hopefully that will work.
Yeah, the draft copy of that should hit the paper. I believe it has to be not more than 30 days away from the public hearing date. So once that hits the paper within, I guess it would probably be the next week or so, we will have a heavily draft stamped copy that we can provide for inspection.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Under New Business, before we make that motion, I wanted to give our town manager just a second to kind of give us a little preamble for this.
Thank you, Madam President. This has been a long process, longer in part because of the pandemic. But starting in Jan, or in November of last year, we solicited proposals from interesting, interested engineering firms to provide consulting services, stormwater engineering services, and traffic services to the town. This is something that had not been done for almost literally decades, in some cases. So we felt that it was necessary to go out, take a look at the, the current environment, see who may be interested, see what type of services we need, what services can be provided. At the end of the day, we felt as a staff that it was important for us to have one firm that we could go to that could provide the services to us to enhance our communication between the various aspects of the consultant relationship. And also that there'd be better communication between those different disciplines. So at the end of the day, and admittedly throughout the process, we kind of went back and forth in my head and others' heads in terms of who was ahead, who was, who was lagging. But we felt the Gateway engineers provided the best combination of rates of expertise and knowledge of the town that can provide the service to us that we're looking for at this point. So there are going to be some significant changes in how we're doing business, but we feel Gateway is the right choice at this time for us.
Okay, are there any questions for Bob or RJ about this before we make a motion on this or not? Yes, Councilmember Terrell?
Bob, what's the term? It says you're entering an agreement. Is it a year term? Or you mentioned a three year lock?
It'll be, it'll be a three year rate lock with annual renewals.
So why don't we just do three years at once? Or that's just for performance purposes?
Just for performance purposes.
I got you. Okay.
I think we got the best of both of that. We got the rate lock in, and we can still, if the performance is enough, we can still get out. So that was...
Which we don't expect.
We don't expect. No, we've dealt with Gateway for a long time, and a long time. So no, we don't expect that, but I think that's a very prudent contract. You have another question?
Just to, I've had a longstanding relationship with Dan and his firm on and off for 15 years. So if this does go to motion, I'm just going to let everybody know that I'll probably abstain from the vote because we've done significant business over the years.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other comments?
I would just like to make a comment to council that we appreciate the process that Bob put forth. Our goal is to provide the town with the best services in a timely, efficient manner. We'll work with staff to provide improvements to all the processes to reach the goal. And I think with, with all the services under Gateway's watch, I can assure you that that will happen, and you'll be pleased with what you see.
Thank you. This is a best practices policy with municipalities to periodically, you know, look at these processes and these relationships. And, and so we're doing that. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion for 13A? Councilmember Farnholz?
Move to enter into an agreement with Gateway Engineers to provide general stormwater and traffic engineering services to the Town of McCandless in accordance with the proposed proposal submitted December 9th, 2019.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll leave opportunity again for any comments or questions that you thought of in the last 30 seconds. All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations, Gateway.
Thank you very much.
And just for the record, Madam President, as Mr. Tarrell noted, he should be logged as an extension on that vote.
All right. So that would be 601, correct, okay. All right, we have, under New Business, the presentation on deer management. So, um, R.G., I think you're going to get some, first of all, I'd like, Dan, can we see you?
I just sent him a camera request.
Okay.
Ken's on as well.
Okay, hi, hi. So this is Dan Cordham. If anyone doesn't know him, he's on the Planning Commission. And then Ken Allhouse is on the EAC. And I know Ken has had a long, Ken, you're in the clouds. There's, you're like in a fog, man.
That's the way my video is.
Okay. I can't Zoom wizard that one, sorry.
All right, so anyway, having known Ken, I know he's always, with his background, always been interested in deer, deer management, the forest. And Dan approached me a couple of months ago now and said, "What, Dan, these dang deer need some, some, something."
Something. We need to do something. Doing nothing doesn't seem to work.
We need to do something. So these two gentlemen have, with just very little support from me, have really just run with this and put this presentation together. And I think all of you have seen the, the survey that we put out in the town crier. We got a great response from that, over 850 responses. And they'll talk about that. So anyway, they have a short presentation about this for council. So I'll just go ahead and let you guys get started on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
I've got it fired up, so let me, let me screen share here, and then we should be good to go.
Have council members already seen this presentation, or is this seen for the first time?
Yes, no, I went ahead and had it sent to council first so that we could have a little time to digest it. So if we had questions, but this is for council, again, to see it officially as well as the public, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
Can you all see one slide right now?
Yes, we can. We see two naughty deer.
Okay, can we see the slide switching right now?
Yeah, it just switched to the overview.
All right, we're good.
And by way of introduction, again, my name is Dan Cordham. I'm a 33-year resident of McCandless. I live in Ward Six. And... I live in Ward 6, and I am a member of the planning commission. So, in January, I approached Madam President and mentioned, and this was immediately on the heels of the Ross Township hearing on this very same subject, and I was impressed by what they were doing. So I approached her and said, "We should be doing something similar," and that's what kicked this thing off. So, if you'll go with me, RJ, to the next page. By way of overview, what I'm trying to do in this presentation is provide some data and information to the town council regarding the impact that deer have on McCandless. To help the council understand this, we initiated a questionnaire that has gone out, has been received, and I'll talk about the results of that later in this presentation. Our objective is to obtain town council approval to create and implement a deer management program. We need to engage and educate our residents, because that is absolutely critical. And we'll do that through open meetings and additional public education programs to get them on board with this activity. We are going to recommend ultimately a managed deer hunt via archery to coincide with the annual hunting season. And then obviously, we'll establish a plan of implementation, once we figure out how this plan is going to look. Next slide. Deer themselves are the keystone species, no pun intended, in the PA environment. Their impact is felt all along the plant and animal spectrum. There are few, if any, natural predators, especially in McCandless, other than an automobile, frankly. And the deer population without this natural predator will double, and I think this is amazing, will double every two to three years. And another piece of interesting information is that an adult deer consumes 10 to 12 pounds of vegetation each and every day. That is about 1 and 1/2 to 2 tons per year. So if you're wondering where your flowers went, there's your answer. Deer are natural browsers. They prefer a native species of trees and shrubs. They're discriminatory that way. And they will eliminate the understory growth of a population if left unchecked. That leaves all of the invasive species to take over, and that's what's happening. Japanese barberry, knotweed, stilt grass, other invasive plants have taken over, and those are ones that the deer do not eat. Significantly, and most importantly, tree growth, new tree growth, is virtually eliminated or significantly reduced. That disrupts the entire ecosystem. Native songbirds and small rodents, mammals, they leave the area because they need that undergrowth. I happen to have taken a walk through North Park just over the weekend, and if anyone has done that recently and pays attention, there is literally no new tree growth, no saplings of any size or stature in North Park, in the trails that I was walking on. And that's the result of the deer impact. The next page is a picture, and I hope you have a chance to see this. There is a fence running right down the middle of that picture. And on the right-hand side of that picture is what natural undergrowth, understory growth looks like. On the left-hand side of that fence is, has deer access. And you can see quite easily what they do. They will eat all of that understory down to a nub, and therefore, no new growth is able to begun, and that's part of the problem that we're seeing. My daughter lives in Washington DC and sent me an article, and there is, for those of you who know Washington DC, a very large park system running through the city. It's called Rock Creek Park. They initiated a deer program in 2013, and they are now reporting that in that period of time, roughly seven years, their sapling and tree growth has doubled in that amount of time. They were having the same problems that we're seeing, and when they initiated that program, their tree growth, sapling growth has doubled. The next slide talks about the impact that the deer have, and most of us, if we do have any interaction with deer, negative interaction, is by a vehicle. Pennsylvania ranks third in the United States, third among deer-vehicle collisions. That gives you a 1 in 52 chance of an annual collision. Average auto insurance claims, based on State Farm data from 2015-16, average insurance claim is $4,000. McCandless reported in 2019 200 such deer-vehicle incidents. So roughly $800,000 worth of property damage, automobile damage, occurred in one year. That's not insignificant. And needless to say, our statewide auto collision insurance rates are gauged, and they do reflect that kind of an incidence. So, if you don't think you're paying for those collisions, if you haven't had a particular incident, you really are through your statewide rates. I do not know and have not been able to get any information on injury and death rates, although I suspect there is data out there, if I had time to check into it. The next page. The deer impact on property and public health. Property damage, you all know. Anybody who has a backyard or a front yard knows exactly what deer are doing to the plantings, trees, shrubs, and gardens. They significantly decimate them. As far as public health goes, and this, the very first comment there about deer ticks and Lyme disease, that was the most common comment submitted by the recent survey. People were concerned and wondering about the deer ticks and Lyme disease spread. So that is obviously something that is to be concerned about. Something that not many people are as aware of, but I think is headed our way, is the chronic wasting disease, which is a disease that is fatal to deer and animals of the same type. I understand that our elk herd in northern Pennsylvania is now being watched closely for transmission of chronic wasting disease. And if it were to get into Allegheny County, it is not. It is close by Somerset, Jefferson, and Cambria. If it were to get into Allegheny County, we don't know the impact of that many deer all of a sudden falling to the chronic wasting disease. The next couple of pages are just some pictures, and a picture is worth 1,000 words. This happens to be my backyard. Those are the forsythia across the backstretch of my backyard. And as you can see, a good three or four feet up, they're just totally eaten away by the deer. That happens each and every year. They don't go any higher, they don't have to reach. The next page. This is what a typical arborvitae looks like after a few years of being planted. Many people plant this shrub, and you can see very clearly that the deer just kind of trim those away. They don't have to reach low, they don't have to reach high. They just eat what is available to them right at mouth level. And you'll see a lot of that. The next page actually shows it in more dramatic detail. You would have thought those trees on the left were pruned with a saw or shears, they were not. And of course, the arborvitae on the right-hand side are just, each and every one of them has been eaten. And so that's what the, that's just part of what the landscape then. I didn't get pictures of tulips and flowers and bushes that are eaten, but these are very obvious. The next page, please. Whatever we do, and we absolutely have to coordinate with the state rules. Deer and all wild animals are property of the state. PA Game Commission will oversee hunting and any other interaction, and if we initiate a hunting program, that will be in strict coordination with the PA Game Commission. And then, obviously, whatever rules we put in place, they will comply with Game Commission regulations. Next. I think it's important to understand what our neighboring communities are doing, and virtually all of them have something already in place. Franklin Park prohibits deer feeding, and they allow hunting in the municipally-owned preserves. Shaler has a controlled archery hunt in their municipal parks. Hampton has a controlled archery hunt in their community park. Ross, which is the newest and just initiated their program, they have archery hunting, and they do allow on private property, obviously with owner permission, starting next month, September 2020. They also prohibit deer feeding. In North Park, we already have an annual deer harvest, which is, has been conducted for many years. But I think clearly, we all know, it is not enough. Whatever is happening in North Park does not necessarily filter out much beyond North Park. A deer, if it has a safe bedding area, and if it has a food supply, does not travel very far, no more than a mile. And so, with the topography of this part of the country, we have all of these small little pockets. You can turn the page. We have all of these small little pockets that are not developed, just because the topography is too steep, or there's a creek or something. That's where the deer hang out, and that becomes their bedding. And then all they have to do is walk into the backyards of the neighboring communities to find their buffet. One of the things that we would do is coordinate with a community wildlife organization, and there are a number of them. But Franklin Park and Ross already have partnered with Suburban Whitetail Management to design an archery program for their communities. And Suburban Whitetail Management offers a good amount of service. They've been in business, and I say business, they've been around for a long time. They will evaluate the properties to hunt. They have already offered their services to us, by the way, through Ken All's house, the other fellow who has helped me on this presentation. They've already offered their services. They will evaluate properties to hunt. They will help qualify hunters. They will assign and monitor hunters to properties. These hunters will be pre-qualified to make sure that they know what they're doing, that they have some sort of experience in this, and that they have killed deer in the past, so that this is not their first rodeo. They will also issue monthly reports on hunting activities and the various success as the program progresses. And of course, we can tailor our program to however we want it to look. But they have a template, if you will, of how this works in other communities, and I think we would use that as a starting point. The next page. What I think is absolutely critical is education for the residents of McCandless. As I mentioned, I don't think, and I believe facts will prove me out, that the historic hunting in North Park maybe has had some impact, but it has not certainly controlled the deer population. Additional hunting areas are needed. Private landowners and certain open spaces will need to be added to the North Park areas. And I've listed a few of them, cemeteries, universities, large residential lots, homeowners associations perhaps. And any vacant property beyond a 50-yard radius of an inhabited building might be considered. And that has to be staked out, figured out where those are, and identified. And that's something that the McCandless and whatever group is pulled together to further this effort is going to have to do. And the residents will only buy into this deer management program and this expansion of the hunt after they fully understood the issues. This education component is critical. We will conduct surveys, obviously we already did, questionnaires, public meetings, and we should publish information that will be continuously put out to the citizenry, so that they know what is going on. Now, the next page. You're all well aware, I believe, that we put out a town crier questionnaire. Relatively straightforward, ranking 1 to 5, you strongly agree as a 5, or you don't strongly agree as a 1. Of the 868 responses, and that, I'm told by John Bajarski, is a very positive response, roughly 1 in 14 households responded. 81%, a dominant number, 81% agree there is a deer problem, and they want to consider a comprehensive deer management program. As I mentioned earlier, they mentioned Lyme disease and ticks were cited most often. The majority of this group, of this 81%, strongly agree. That means they ticked off a 5 in their survey. 8% do not agree with the program or do not feed rule. They don't want anything of that type. Smaller percentages, 3%, were kind of indifferent. They had no strong sentiment one way or the other. And 8% were just hard to classify. They said things like, "Well, we think there's a problem, but we don't want a program." Or, "We want a program, but we don't think there's a problem." Kind of hard to tell where they stood in it. Some of the common questions that were asked were, "How would a program be effectively enforced?" Valid question, and that's part of the education program that we will have to convey to these people. And then, "What are the details of the program?" Also part of the education program. And after we would work with someone like Suburban Whitetail Management or others to conduct, to create such a program, we'd be able to relay that information. So, lastly, the next page. Lastly, here are our goals. This is what we're trying to do. We want to determine, once and for all, the overall impact on the property and the public health. We want to manage, not eliminate. This is not an anti-deer effort. We want to manage an appropriate deer population. I have seen 12, 14, 16 deer in my backyard. You've all seen the same thing, I bet you. And I think that's too many. We want to manage this, not eliminate the deer. We need to work with the PA Game Commission to integrate a mitigation program with the PA annual hunting season, which runs September through January of every year. We will coordinate with our neighboring municipalities where appropriate, and obviously, that does make some sense, and initiate, again, an education program for the residents. They need to also understand the impact of any inaction if we were to not do something. Keep in mind, the deer population doubles every two years. And we need to set near and long-term goals. There is no short-term solution to this. This has to run year after year after year. And so, with the population doubling every two to three years, this is a long-term program, and it will be probably adapted as we move over time. And that's to be expected, and I welcome such a thing. So, in conclusion, next page. We are looking for the council to approve the creation of a deer management plan, to create and approve the creation of a group. I don't know what that group would consist of, but I'm willing to be on it. And then, create such a plan, and then eventually get it kicked off. And as was mentioned at the beginning, my name is Dan Cordham. Ken All's house was in on this presentation as well. We can both be reached for questions, if you have any, and I'm willing to take any now, if you have some.
Thank you, Dan. Very well done. I appreciate the work that you and Ken, you know, have done on this. I think we have all heard, when going, talking to our neighbors and going door-to-door and in our own properties, that this is an issue that concerns a lot of people. And, you know, that's why we put the survey out, because we wanted to make sure that it wasn't just what we were hearing, but the facts really kind of bore that out. So, are there any questions from council members now, or council member Woods?
Madam President, I have a question. Mr. Cordham, do you have a rough idea of what the cost associated with working with Suburban Whitetail Management is?
Well, that's interesting, because I asked the same question, as I was expecting to hear some number. They provide their services for free. And I was surprised, and I said, "Why would they provide their services for free?" And they said that they and their hunters within the group have to travel miles and miles and hours to get to deer hunting properties. And so if they can do it almost literally in their backyard, they appreciate that opportunity, and they do this and put this together with no cost to us.
That's great news, thank you.
They also have liability insurance for each of their hunters when they're on people's private property.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Spanholz?
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for a very enlightening presentation. I'm not trying to get into the weeds here, but I was just curious. It sounds to me, if chronic wasting disease in deer is as close as, say, Somerset County, that, and we're in the middle of a pandemic, that it's not unlikely that it'll arrive here sometime, perhaps. But you indicated that there could be implications. I mean, I took that to be negative implications. It would, I don't know how to put this correctly, but deer die from it, and so you have bed deer in the woods. But what could be the other negative implications of, you know, that occurring in our neighborhoods?
Well, I'll first admit, I'm not a scientist by any stretch. And my reason for mentioning that was, is with our population of deer... if this were to start to wipe out the population, you would literally have dead deer carcasses all over. And that would be a problem, one, to collect them all, and then what other other problems that come about with having dead carcasses around, which we could probably all imagine? Rats and other animals feeding on them and who knows what. That was where I was headed with that. I don't know of any other scientific problems that could arise, but I just don't know that.
Well, that sounds bad enough.
Chronic wasting disease is actually even closer. It's by my one property up in Indiana County. It's spread basically from the deer farms. You get a deer that has it, and then it spreads it through its feces. So when we have the concentration of deer, particularly with people feeding deer, that's how it gets transmitted. And most of the time when they die, they go down next to a stream and die. So it's like they're not easily to access the dead deer. They're down in the streams and then polluting North Park Lake and Pine Creek and such.
No, that's, yeah, that doesn't sound good. All right. Thank you. Gives me a better idea. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions, or Dan or Ken?
This is Trish Clinton. I have a, I know some municipalities have, you know, have prohibited residents from eating deer. Do you have any on, you know, as a first step? If that was instituted here in McCandless, would that, would it have any kind of impact on the population growth? Or would we still need this on instituting the hunt?
Well, I can only give you anecdotal information that I have, and that was from Ross. Ross started their program about a year ago, maybe slightly less than a year, but I'll say a year ago, with a do not feed provision. And they didn't see any impact based on that. And that's when they kicked off the more
Okay.
more aggressive deer management program. The feeding, candidly, the feeding is hard to manage.
Enforce. Hard to enforce.
It's very hard to enforce, and it becomes frankly a neighbor talking about a neighbor, and that is difficult. So if you just, if you prohibit it entirely and have the hunt, I think the awareness will become even more, it would be even greater, and I think therefore in total more effective.
Just a couple of comments on that. My one neighbor used to feed deer down on Griffith Drive, and guys hunt behind the church on Inglewood Road and then be on the woods behind my house between North Park and my house. And by her feeding the deer at the same time every day, she was making those deer very predictable for the hunters. Yeah, a lot of the McCandless township has people that hunt in it. Particularly like when we walk in Wal Park, you can see 10 archery deer stands there. One of the differences with the hunting groups is that they use climbing stands. They don't leave anything in the woods. Where, like in Wal Park and Potter Park and things, you can see permanent archery stands there. The issue with a lot of the hunters that are hunting here is like, I had four really nice bucks in my backyard last week. And that's what all those guys are after, is that big buck. And the landowners would be advised to tell people that they shoot two does before they shoot a buck. But the issue is, is that we can step on toes of people who are already hunting in McCandless as we apply a deer management program. So that's just a caution that there are people that feel that they have a privilege of hunting like in Wal Park.
And just to emphasize what Ken said, if you heard it, they have to shoot two doe, the part of the programs that I've seen. They have to shoot two does before they go after a buck. And so clearly, it's got a rationale to the way they do it.
If there aren't any more questions, what Dan has asked for is a nod from council to put together a ad hoc committee. Probably, I don't know, what do you think, Dan, three or five? We can talk about this. It'd be nice, like a person from council maybe, and maybe we can talk about, but specifically who we'd like on this. But I need a nod, we don't have to vote, we don't have to do a resolution, but I need a nod from council to establish this ad hoc committee. And I think it would be a good idea for council, you have the information, the contact information for Dan and Ken, to send any ideas or comments or concerns or fears that come up and send to them to, so that they have that information with this committee when they start to have this group work up a plan that works for McCandless. But I need a nod from you all for them to go ahead and get started on this. I definitely feel like it's something we need, but of course, we have to agree. So, can, okay, all right, all right.
This is Trish. I'm in support.
Okay, good. You didn't see it, but everybody raised their hands, and then you gave a verbal support, Trish. So thank you. Thank you very much. So, great. That's perfect. Dan and Ken will talk and we'll get a couple more people on the committee to share the work, and then we'll get started.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Quick question.
Sure.
For Dan and Ken, are you guys hunters by any chance? Or, because it sounds like a lot of this will rely on hunters. So I'd like to make sure that we're getting people who are, you know, who are going to be relying on to do this, to do the actual pinning, you know, get a lot of their input. I just didn't know if you guys yourselves were hunters or if you have the input of some.
I'll answer first, and I am not a hunter. I do not own a gun at all. So Ken is, he can answer for himself.
Oh, okay.
I've been hunting for a long time. I used to hunt down here when everybody went to the mountains, and now everybody hunts down here, so I go to the mountains.
I just want to make sure that we're getting, you know, points of view from everywhere for input on this. And, you know, hunters would seem like a pretty natural group to get quite a bit of input on this one, I think.
When you join the, these different hunting groups, whether it's the Whitetail Management in North Park or the Suburban Hunters in Franklin Park and Ross, they have qualifications as well as passing, you know, proficiency tests. And they have to keep records of where they are and when they're there and all of that kind of thing.
Okay. Okay, awesome. Yep.
And we'll put all this together and then submit it to council. That's what I said, like, so now if you're like, oh, I've got all these great ideas, let me send them, do that. So, you know, because we don't want to, we don't want them to go all the trouble to write something, and then everybody gives their ideas on the back end. So send your ideas now, so they can see about incorporating some of those, see what will work, what won't work, and then we'll get this started then. Okay? Congratulations, Dan and Ken. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Yeah, thanks. All right. I think the last item on our meeting this evening, is there, is there any other new business? Let me ask that.
Madam President, I have an item I'd like to discuss for new business.
Okay.
Just by way of background, a couple of days after our previous meeting, I attended a webinar, and there was a woman who was the former mayor of Irving, Texas, and she's now a congressional candidate. And she was speaking about her time in office and how they were able to pass a set of regulations for term limits for their council and for their mayor position. And she, when she mentioned it, she said they did it in their code of ethics. And so I looked it up, because we were talking about a code of ethics at that time. And it turns out it wasn't in their code of ethics, it was in the city charter that they changed that. So at any rate, it was an interesting idea to me, and I'm not asking for a decision or even a discussion tonight, because I know I'm putting you on the spot here right now, bringing this up at the last second. But I was wondering if there might be any interest in getting this as an agenda item at a future meeting.
This is Dave. I mean, I think, I think it's always worth discussing anything like that. So, you know, I'd be in favor of having a discussion on it myself personally.
I think we would have to have a kind of a maybe specific proposal. Could you write just a specific proposal, proposal for, whatever, to kind of get the discussion going? So we knew what you were thinking of, for sure.
So I'm not sure what this would look like. I imagine it would be an amendment to our town charter. Is that right, Gavin?
Right, that's correct. I would say, right.
I think that would be a process.
Bob could address that. Changing of the charter is a big deal.
It's, you have to form a charter commission. You have to be able to review the various aspects. You can limit that discussion. You don't have to have a general review of the charter, but you would need to identify what areas of the charter that you would want to consider. So just be cautious. This is a year-long process, minimum, to do that. And then it has to be taken to a vote of the electors.
So it would have to be added on next year's election?
Right.
Right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Right. Okay. It would be like a referendum?
But yes.
Would it be called a referendum? Okay, so it would be called a referendum.
Article 14 of the charter lays out that process, Angela, if you want to take a look and see what's involved there, just to get some background.
That's fine. I'm just wondering if it's only David and I that are interested in a discussion, then it's probably not worth pursuing. So that's kind of where I'm at. Just wanted to see if anyone else is interested, if it's worth going down at least the road to have a discussion about it.
I would be interested, definitely. So that's, I'm on board.
I would like, I am interested. I just, I guess my only cautionary comment is that, because I think it's a very worthy discussion point. I would just, again, because of financial concerns, I wouldn't like to be in a position to throw lots of legal fees and everything against that discussion. But I think having more about the discussion and the implications would be a good thing.
Yeah, it seems like a lot of heavy lifting to get something like that passed.
And that's something I would hope that we could flesh out in, in talking about it. Actually, what would have to go into making a change like that? And what it would look like, and if it's something that we all want to support. So if it's all right with you, then perhaps I'll get with you, Gavin, and figure out what the, and Bob, and figure out what the ins and outs of that are and try and get it on a future agenda.
My concerns with term limits are the same problem we got ourselves into with having committees that had to have people from certain areas. And that is, if you have someone who's termed out, and you have a person who's just, well, I know I'm going to get it because no one else applied, that's a very concerning thing to me. Because as we know, it's difficult to get people to serve on council. As most of these people know, who were almost, I don't say coerced, that's too strong of a word, but finding people to apply is difficult. So the big red flag that I have is that, you know, good people term out and no one else steps up. Or someone, like I said, steps up because they know they can win because no one else has applied. I think that's my biggest concern, my biggest concern. And of course, there's the argument that everyone who, that that's what the election is for. It's for the citizens to decide if they want someone reelected or not. And that does seem to take that out of the hands of citizens. But we can certainly, council member Spahnholz.
Right, I, just for clarity's sake, I wanted to, for Ms. Woods, I wanted to clarify. I am, I don't have an opinion. My point was, I don't have an opinion on this issue at this point at all. I would like to learn more about it. I'm not sure that, I guess I would actually ask, since you're bringing the issue up, it's of interest to you, of just getting more information and, you know, seeing there's a way that we can, again, with all respect to the sunshine laws, but I just wanted more information. That, I was looking for sharing of information on this topic, so that I could create a opinion.
That's my expectation. I'm not expecting anyone to come prepared with a discussion point tonight. Like I said, I'm just dropping this on you. So I think that knowing that it's something that we would discuss in the future, give you some time to do a little bit of research, you know, develop an opinion on the topic before we actually got into a full-fledged discussion about it.
It's also helpful if you would like to have something like that added to the agenda, that you let me know, so we can add it. And that way, the council members can come a little more prepared.
That's what I'm doing now. I'm not asking for a discussion now, I'm asking if we can add it to a future agenda.
Are there any other comments or questions? Any other new business?
Madam President, this is David Smith. Just a quick question to avoid confusion. With the new ordinance on signage, is that going to be posted somewhere where people can access it, you know, pretty quickly? Or maybe that's more a question for Bob and RJ?
Yes, it will be, it will be posted conspicuously so people can access it. My intent would be to add to that, as we had discussed previously, some key points or some guidance from staff related to the ordinance, how, what our interpretation of the ordinance is and how it will be enforced. And if possible, we'll even put some notations down, areas that it would not be permitted, period. So it's clear moving forward, what will, what will occur there. The ordinance has to be advertised, and then will take effect 10 days from that ad. So we'll get it advertised as quickly as we can. I can let you all know when that has been accomplished, and then in the date of enactment, or it'll be act.
Do you think it would be, following up on council member Smith's question, would it be reasonable to maybe notify the major campaigns that are coming down in McCandless, sending them a copy of it to kind of save ourselves maybe some trouble in the long run?
We will do anything that we can do to save ourselves work in the long.
Okay. All right. Any other, any other new business? All right, is there a, a motion to reconvene this meeting? So moved. Under four. Looking for hands. Second. Okay, who was the, who was the first ones?
Angela and Shelley.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to reconvene this meeting at 6:30 on September 14th to conduct some more interviews for the Public Library Authority. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will reconvene September 14th. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.